Call the City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kedala.
Here.
Alderman Knight.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitton.
Here.
Alderman Shawkey.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. For him being present, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on its ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2008?
So moved.
Is there a second? Comments, corrections, additions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bills, Alderman Knight?
Okay, if you had turned to page 12 in the pack for bills. Land Vision. I would like to remove that payment for now. We just, well, we haven't had a really good track record going with them. We had a lot of payment in so far, very little product. We just received a copy of product last week, which I believe Alderman, Shawkey, Kedala, and myself received a packet. A lot of reading and whatnot, very not digestible right now. So I'd like to remove that item from the bills payable and make a motion to approve the bills at $367,428.15.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Kedala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton.
Yes.
Let's pass this. Do any citizens wish to address the City Council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, starting with Mr. Scuba. Sir, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. Hoping to be brief here. I want to discuss the condition of the pond located in the front of our condominium at 480 East Montrose in Wooddale. And my name is Keith Scuba. I am the present president of the Homeowners Association. And I'd like to pass this. This is just a petition that I had a number of our homeowners sign.
They're very interested in this.
This is probably one of the top items that our residents are concerned with. And what, this developed about 25 or 30 years ago. I think a big mistake was made when that subdivision was created. That pond, it's a retention pond. It should have been deeded probably to the Homeowners Association or the resident, you know, the association for the whole subdivision. But it was not. It's held in a private family. Joe Johnson lives across the street. Excuse me. And I also have some pictures. These pictures were taken this year of the pond. It's larger than these pictures will show, but it shows the kind of condition that happens over the summer. I like to pass these through. So, you know, there was just a mistake made 25 or 30 years ago. It's hard to, you know, somehow we need to correct it now. And at one time, this pond actually had a waterfall. It was nicely maintained. And over the last nine or 10 years, it's just, it's been degrading and becoming more and more of a problem. There's almost no maintenance on it until enough people complain. They cut the grass maybe twice a year. And there is a, I don't have a picture of it, but there's also a Mr. Johnson from the city of Wooddale who's documented the condition of this pond and has pictures of a little viewing bridge or deck, that you might want to call it. It's, the only thing right now, it's got yellow tape, do not, do not enter, it's so dangerous. Now, the kids and older people in the community still go over there and, you know, want to look in the pond and see that we do have fish in that pond, turtles, ducks and geese. So there's a fair amount of wildlife there. So I'm proposing that somehow we work maybe with the city's attorney to try to get this deeded to the city of Wooddale. That at least we can get, you know, proper maintenance on it. And I happen to be at the county today, and the taxes on that property are $29.96 a year. And they are current. But to me, that means it's worthless if that's what the assessor says that taxes on that property are. So I, the gentleman that owns it is up in age, and I know that the village has probably dealt with this matter in the past, but it's beyond us waiting any longer to, you know, as homeowners in that area, you've had new developers come in there, build new homes, townhomes, and it's a blight on the area. And this is in our city, and it's right out our front door, along with some other homes and other condominiums in the area. So that would be our goal, maybe to get an aerator into this pond. And our own association might be willing to pay part of this expense to, you know, get started and do something with this particular condition. And the last thing I want to pass around, this is a aerator. The price on it is $1,269. That, it's just one example of what can be done. And I'd like to just pass, this is the last thing I have to pass. So, the, with the poor maintenance, the odors that arise out of this pond in the summer, it's a serious problem. It may be a health hazard. I'm not sure. But we'd like to begin now and correct the problems that were, somehow had happened in the past. The city of, our city of Wooddale has been aware of this for many years. Last year, he tried to pump the pond dry, and he was going to build on this, and the city had to come in and, you know, put a stop work order on it. It's going through all kinds of unusual situations. Now, if this property is worthless because it only, the taxes are only $29.96 a year, you know, why would somebody want to hold on to this? And so I'm hoping that maybe, you know, the Alderman and the mayor might be able to form a committee to work on this problem. With us, it's a number one issue with almost all the residents of our one unit. We have 48 units in our condominium. And there's a lot of things that could be done to, you know, enhance this and make it comparable to other ponds located in the city. And, you know, just somehow we got to get to work on this. I don't know if there's any questions I can answer. Be glad to try. But...
Mr. Scuba, I thank you for your presentation. For the record, I acknowledge receipt of a petition from Whispering Oaks, two homeowners, petition to the city of Wooddale. Please sign below if you would support an effort to have the city of Wooddale properly maintain the pond and install an aerator. It's signed by 27 of the unit owners. I think, as you mentioned, that is privately owned. I can certainly help you, I think, tonight with property maintenance, and we'll take under consideration whether the owner wants to donate it to the city, or we can work out some other means of acquisition by either the association or by us. In the meantime, Mr. Forrest and Mr. Kramer, would you meet with Mr. Scuba and exchange information with him in the cafeteria? I think these two gentlemen will be able to address your concerns immediately. Three gentlemen, apparently.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks very much.
Welcome anytime. Mr. Stone? Is there anyone else which, who wishes to address the City Council at this time?
Just one.
You're next. Alderman Lewitton?
I'd like to make an announcement that the Fourth Ward will hold its annual meeting for Fourth Ward people. It will be Tuesday, October 21st at 7:00 PM at the Wooddale Library. And coffee is going to be provided, donated by Lisa Powers and Samantha Barron of Elk Grove Village, Panera. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Alderman. Again, does any other citizen wish to address the City Council? If not, we do have a special guest with us tonight, our state Senator Carol Pankow, who asked if she could address the City Council. And again, Carol, if you would use the lectern, please.
Good evening. I asked to come and see if I could just spend a few minutes with you. Initially, I wanted to give you an idea about what was going on down in Springfield. But since we aren't there right now, and at least for the past two weeks, the governor hasn't called us down to a special session, nothing is going on down in Springfield right now, which is very good, I might add. Whenever we're in town, it's never a good thing. So anyway, the last, three weeks ago, we were down in Springfield. The governor called one of his momentous special sessions. And basically, it was for the ethics bill, which you probably have read about in the paper and know just about as much that you got from the paper as I could tell you. The governor had decided, now, this bill had taken about three years to pass. It initially came from the House, was passed from the House. President of the Senate, Emil Jones, wouldn't call it. It sat there for a good year without it even being called. Then finally got called, I'm sure, I'm sure because of pressure from the newspapers, et cetera, and some of the candidates that were feeling pressure that they hadn't gotten a vote on this, so they wanted to make sure that they had a vote on it. So finally, he did call it. It did pass big numbers through both the House and the Senate, landed on the governor's desk, and the governor decided he wanted to improve it. And so basically, instead of just taking the constitutional officers and addressing a system that's been basically known as pay-to-play, he put every other elected official in the state of Illinois into this ethics bill also. Needless to say, when it came back to both the House and the Senate, it was overridden in big numbers, and you've read about that in the paper. However, right as we were about to leave, two things happened, and two things were passed, that the governor has signed one and one he hasn't signed. And the first one was a fund sweep considerably downsized from what the governor had originally proposed, was only like $200 million. These funds are dedicated funds. They were put there for a special purpose, usually with a fee attached to it of some sort. For instance, if you're a barber in the state of Illinois, you have to have a state license to be a barber. So years ago, before the governor, this current governor got there, it was like $50 to get your state license. Now it's like $200. And that increase in the fees, each individual person adding on to it and accumulating over a number of years, has put a lot of reserves in some funds. Now, the governor calls them reserves. The people who pay the fee would like to have additional education, to promote their profession, or investigators, or whatever. But what has happened over the period of years of this administration is that money has built up in that fund. So in essence, the governor created all these little slush funds all over so that he could go in and grab them whenever he wanted to, and it would be a way for him to get money for his general fund. So the governor wanted to sweep almost a billion dollars from all of these various funds. So this was considerably downsized. But in conjunction with that, we passed a supplemental appropriation, which basically addressed all, not all, the majority of the major cuts that the governor made in the budget this year. And that was basically in three different categories. Women's domestic violence programs, drug and alcohol abuse, and the third one was state parks and historic sites. Governor wants to close 12 state parks. He wants to close seven or eight historic sites. He says the money isn't there. Well, the money isn't there because he cut it out of the budget this year. And in my particular senate district, which you guys are in my senate district, yay, we have Serenity House, which was particularly hard hit. This is a drug and alcohol halfway house that's in Addison, just a little north of North Avenue off of Old 53. And there, the amount of money that they get from the state was cut by a third. So it has really, really impacted them to a very large extent. So this money was supposed to restore money to that. So the governor signed the bill to sweep the funds, and in fact, had his administrative officer go in and sweep the funds. So the money is now sitting in the general fund. He has not signed the supplemental appropriation that would say where the money goes. And this all goes back to the trust factor. Now, at some point, he's going to have to veto it, and mandatorily veto it, improve it, like he is want to do, or do something. And I'm, I could almost guarantee that once that happens, the General Assembly will come back and override it and put it back in the funds that they should need it. However, that means that these programs are waiting all those many more months to get the money that they should have had in the first place. So the wars and the fights between the General Assembly and the administration continue. It hasn't gotten any better. And in fact, last year, somebody said, wow, it can't get it, you know, the whole atmosphere, it can't get any worse. Well, it did. So that's probably a good illustration of the way the General Assembly doesn't trust the governor, and the governor really doesn't trust the General Assembly either. So you basically have this standoff between the two, which means that relatively no big things are actually happening. One of the things that the people of Illinois need so badly is a capital program. But Eve, nobody trusts the governor to deal with, to basically give him $38 billion to play with. I mean, that would, and no one knows how to tie his hands. There's no way of doing it. Someone asked me, well, couldn't you just pass a bill and list everything out in it, and then that would become it? No, because we've, we've done that before. We've done it where we've listed every single item in a, in an appropriation. And he just says, well, I'm not going to spend the money. So there. And so that's kind of a shorthand of where we are as to the general mood and attitude down in Springfield. Now, I did want to just spend a couple minutes on the con-con question, which is going to be on the ballot. You guys are community leaders, and I'm sure you are going to be asked once, maybe twice, between now and the election, what is this all about? The current constitution that we are operating under right now as the state of Illinois was adopted in 1970. Previous to that, there was 100 years when the previous constitution was in place. This one was adopt, when this one was adopted in 1970, there was a provision in there that says every 20 years, the question must, must be put to the people of the state of Illinois, do you want to call a constitutional convention? Constitutional convention would be the means by which you would adopt, by which you would present a new constitution to the state of Illinois. So the question is on the ballot in November. It wasn't put there by the General Assembly. It isn't put there by the governor's office. It wasn't put there by any interest group. It is required to be on there because of, our current constitution says this question must be asked every 20 years. Now, it must pass by an extraordinary majority, and so we'll see what happens. And in fact, I think probably about a month ago, you should have received at your home a little pamphlet from the Secretary of State's office, Jesse White, the Secretary of State. He is required by law, by that same constitutional provision, to produce a document that basically shows the pros and the cons of having a constitutional convention. And then everybody makes up their mind how they want to vote on it. Should it pass? Next year, then, there will be an election for delegates to a constitution. There are two delegates for every state senate district. There are 59 state senators, so there will be 118 delegates to this, to the constitutional convention, if the question passes. If it doesn't pass, there won't be anything, and we'll go for another 20 years. But if it does pass, those people will then meet, and in, by 2010, they must produce a document, oh, and all of these delegates are elected. And then they must produce a document by 2010, which will be, then the question goes on the ballot in 2010, do you wish to adopt this as your new constitution in the state of Illinois? So the voters will have three times to vote on, in, during this whole process. Number one, the question that will be on the ballot this year. Number two, the voting for delegates themselves. And number three, do you want to adopt this document that the constitutional convention produced as your new constitution? And with that, if it's permissible, I don't know if it is or not, if you guys have any questions, I'll happily take some questions.
Alderman Lewitton?
A lot of the people in, that I've talked to are confused about this election for having a constitutional convention. What's confusing is the way it says that X number of people must vote yes out of the entire voting population, or a different number has to vote for it out of those who vote on the issue, because not everybody votes on every single thing. So there are two, two bars. Can you explain the difference between the two bars?
Yeah. Like you said, not everybody votes on everything. So it's 60% of those voting on the question. So for those that checked either yes or no, 60% of that. Or 50% of those that take a ballot. Taking a ballot does not necessarily mean you vote on the question. That's why the two differences. So it's one or the other.
Very good answer.
Alderman Shawkey?
The only thing I've heard about the constitutional convention that you're talking about is that because of the political arena in Springfield right now, that one of the things that probably would happen is that retirees would have their retirements taxed, which they don't do now. Is this something that is true? Do you understand this to be true, or?
There, there are some groups who feel that it is unfair that those that are receiving a state retirement do not have to pay the 3% income tax, personal income tax on that. The danger whenever you call a convention, doesn't, just because they might be in favor of it, doesn't mean that that would be included in a new document. It'll be a vote of the delegates as to whether something like that would even be addressed. I would suspect that the general mood is that it would not. But there are different groups and organizations. There are those who would like to see recall in, in the state of Illinois, and feel that the only way they're going to get it is through a new constitutional convention. There are those that feel that we should go back to multi-member districts as opposed to single-member districts, both reps and senators. There are some that feel that the representative lines and the senate line should not be the same, that you can have separate state representative lines that don't go along. Right now, we have a senate district that's divided, and you have two rep districts in every senate district, but the lines, the total lines for the senate district and the rep districts are the same. There are some that feels that you, you don't have to have it that way. There are a lot of different interest groups that may feel one way or the other. But there's also the other side who says, basically, the devil we have might be better than the devil we might get. So, and so they are opposed to it. A lot of your unions, your teachers' unions have just come out, some of your business groups have also come out as being opposed to a constitutional convention. I think everybody just has to make up their own mind.
Alderman Coles?
I have two questions. One, approximately, how much money is this going to cost the taxpayers of the state of Illinois for use, this 118 delegates that are going to this convention? How much is it going to cost? Do you have it figured out yet?
I think the estimate that was in the pamphlet was $80 million.
I heard 100, 100 million.
No, it's not going to cost that much. The last one cost 14 million, back in 1970.
One other question.
And so I think probably, they're saying probably not much more than 80 million, but what the exact figure is, no one really knows.
What money is money, then? In other words, if you spend 80, you might spend 100. I have one other question. This is to get my personal opinion. This is my personal, this is to get all the retirements together to, for the state of Illinois, our great governor and their representatives to bleed all the retirements funds, and then what happens is the state which doesn't put money into them now will take out the money that they need, and then the people that are on a retirement for the state, including workers that work for the state, will be out of a retirement in 10 years. And that's, that's one thing that I'm against, this constitutional thing. If you want to get rid of the governor, all you have to do is have all your representatives and senators and House of Representatives impeach him. That's all you can do. You can put in, he's turned it down twice, but it can be done again. That's my opinion.
Yeah. Well, I, I think I have a sense of how you might be voting on the con-con question. And as far as impeachment, yes, there is a process in the current constitution right now for impeaching any, actually, any elected official in DuPage County. It's not, or in the state. It's not just the governor. And that would be where the House would have to bring articles of impeachment, and the Supreme Court, the Illinois Supreme Court Justice would sit as the judge, and the senate then sits as the body that hears the articles of impeachment. Very similar to the federal system, if you remember back during the days when President Clinton was being impeached, where you had to have hearings and articles had to be brought, et cetera, et cetera. The problem is, the last time that there was even considered was back in the mid-mildies, a Supreme Court Justice, there were hearings held in the House. I was in the House at that time. And it was determined that they were not sufficient enough to carry through with, with articles of impeachment to the senate. It's a very rare process. It has been used very, very infrequently. And there also is a process for amending the constitution without having a constitutional convention. And that is, an amendment would have to be filed in the House, passed by And that is, an amendment would have to be filed in the House, passed by an extraordinary majority, filed in the senate, passed by an extraordinary majority, governor would have to sign it, and then the question gets put on the ballot. The last time that happened was also back in the mid-'90s, and it was when they moved the date that required an extraordinary majority from July 1st back to June 1st, thinking that then we would always have budgets and we would never go overtime in the General Assembly. That didn't work. But that was the last constitutional amendment change that was actually passed through the General Assembly. There is only one General Assembly member right now who was a delegate at the Constitutional Convention back in 197, or back in 1969. The question was on in 1968 and adopted, and that's Speaker of the House, Mike Madigan. And he feels that that document is really, really good, and so therefore, when these things are filed, he never calls them. So, that's why you have so few constitutional changes that come through the legislative procedure process. You're welcome.
Alderman, can I?
Yeah. Can you, okay, my constituents are going to come and say, you're for it, you're against it, and that. Could you give me your best pro for it and your best con against it? Why, you know, why should we have a constitutional convention, or why not?
Probably the best, the pro for it was the Chicago Tribune editorial. It was not last Sunday, it was probably the Sunday before. And I'm sure you can go online and read it. It was basically saying, if you don't like the way things are happening in Illinois, then it's time for a change. And the only way you're going to get change is if you do it through a constitution, because that's the basis on which everything else happens. The best anti-argument I have heard is, basically boils down to the philosophy that, that the devil you have is probably better than the devil you might get. And if you open everything up, your particular issue may not ever get addressed by the delegates because they, for whatever reason, may not want to. And so, you may end up with a document that, that you really liked the old constitution better than the one that you've got now.
Thank you.
Alderman Luiton?
Actually, this question was raised to me by Dr. Donald Kellner, dentist over at 333 Sweet.